Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Also on the tennis courts. So, is everybody in the same bringing the ant monitor to the RSU is responsible for taking care of the tennis courts?
Yeah, sure. Curtis has just cleared it up for me, I guess.
Okay, so I'm seeing too there's some lighting problem there, so.
Obviously though, not the school, but other agencies share the cost of, like when they got the patch.
Mom and Grand.
Off track.
Yeah.
So it was, and I don't know again, it would probably share the cost of two pairs to the court.
So, but if it is needed to the RSU, then that has to go through an RSU committee in order to do that, correct?
Yeah.
Would it have to go through the Dolphins Committee?
Oh, I think so. Is that the case, those tennis courts were part of the deal or weren't they?
Yeah.
And there's no stipulation that anybody else is partially responsible for it, or?
There was no time at all. They didn't want federal money or anything like that. We didn't rush.
I just want to say, that on the road, I've heard, you know, I think you have to pay them, otherwise we'll just continually run off from.
You're like going down, yeah, pavement would be the best.
I've heard of getting right now, get a scoop of this fall, see what the teams are coming along, it's not, can we get another there, but by spreading in would be, you know. So I won't ask, but last year this fall.
It's going to be bumps up on the pavement. And then we will, we're not really near the pavement. There goes the hole, figure out to put that because.
We've got three more weeks. We've got three more weeks.
Three more weeks.
You're almost done with this point, isn't it?
Yeah, it needs a little bit of.
Oh, sure. Because we're talking about driveways, last September I brought up the road that was at the fair association, we could actually town property, and I was told it's going to be fixed. The road is awful, and you have football games up there, there's fundraisers up there. The last washout we had was really bad. And I think if we take care of it comes to the hall as good as we do, that part comes to cart, that maybe that should be targeted before we worry about the school. Because it is town property.
As the RSU owns the property, the town does own the property, then the RSU would be responsible for the town, you don't really have to worry about it, the RSU is supposed to take care of it.
Well, the rent came to me because you can't even, I told him, I did project one, project two this week, project three, next week we'll get the lights on, because I'll get it done. Steve Capel and I are getting done. Because billions and grounds of the RSU, thousands, it's going to cost $20,000 for light bulbs.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Does, does anybody have permission from the RSU to put those lights in?
I have permission from the principals.
You have permission from where then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Permission from the principal of the state.
And that's at our cost?
No, it costs another.
No, no, yes, but there is a cost involved, is that correct?
There's a cost involved, Kirby, put some hole patch in, there's a cost of that, Brian Ochoa donated three hours of bush-hogging last night, there's a cost of that, and Steve Capel and I were getting the light bulbs, and there'd be a cost of that. But we're not asking, because it don't get done.
Ed, could you give me a favor? Would you mind giving me an estimate, you know, when you guys get this all done, you heard too, would you mind giving me an estimate of what the, it saved the RSU from having to do this?
Sure.
Thank you, appreciate that. I like the, oh, excuse me, Chair, I'd like to also, and all these gentlemen that are making this on their own shoulders, to make sure that our children and our, and the schools are, have what they need in our sports, and I'm glad to hear that the, we still got away to fill up the snow, so it'd be nice to be able to go play tennis at night. And I appreciate that, thank you very much.
Um, Mr. Secretary, I'd like to, um, I'd like to read a short letter here, I think that affects all of the people of Monmouth. And I would like to know from you people, how to deal with one of your selectmen.
Can I ask your name, please, so I can put it in?
Reginald Marion. On September 10th, late Saturday morning, three members of a 30 Academy Road, Colleen Fornia, her husband Dennis, and her son Michael Davis, came across the street to my lawn, yelling, threatening, taunting me to fistfight with them. I was called a welfare queen, trail the trash, and they told me that they were tired of supporting me. I was ridiculed for being disabled, I was called a drug dealer, I was told I would be removed from the neighborhood, and threatened with violence while in the presence of a member of your board. I would like to know how you, as an elected body, can help protect myself, my family, and the neighborhood of Lower Academy Road. Thank you.
Well, I'm not sure what you said.
I live on Lower Academy Road, and I have no problems with anybody. There's no problems going on, except for the people that started up.
I know the police were called the seniors, I don't know if the police chief decided the problem is Ray and Lou now, the issues, because that maybe, I don't know what's involved with the town may have in this matter, but maybe we should schedule a meeting with the chairman to talk about this, or some kind of session or something, I think that we, you know, we need to talk, and I don't know if this is appropriate place.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'm not even sure it's an appropriate manner for the board to consider. I'm not sure. There's a difference between civil matters, between human genes and the process of the town and the board, and, again, I, you know, I'm open if, if, if all the parties believe that some kind of meeting needs to be held, or, you know, a legal executive session can be held, then, then that's fine, but it would appear to me that this type of issue is a matter that's, that's best left to law enforcement and the public, you know, the people involved to deal with that, it's certainly something that we're not, we're not for.
This assessment dealt with the, please follow.
It is being dealt with, yeah.
This is me.
Thank you.
I just want to say, Doug, because the police are dealing with it, I have a little fingerprint right here.
Mr. Mayor, a public comment? Regarding the RSU meeting, I attended the RSU meeting, or at least the first part of the RSU board meeting, and was very pleased to see what I thought was a change, not only the new, the new chairman of the board, I think has brought a new, more open, sense of openness to the board meetings, while they, their process, or if you will, is to only allow comments on agenda items, she was willing to allow comments that were off the agenda, and the informational exchange between members seemed to go much smoother. I found Mr. Hands to be very open, and very pleasant, so, again, the first meeting that I attended, wasn't there for the whole thing, but what I got from the time that I was there, it was a very positive change in atmosphere, I just wanted to say that.
She can call me, yes, someone else has talked to you, I want to talk about the tax bill over here. And you do want.
I just want to say, I really appreciate all the, you guys, a lot of the selectmen were there for the first board meeting. It was a great privilege to have our decathlon team there, academic decathlon, that was given public recognition for placing first in small schools in the state last year, the second overall in the state, and yet several people honor, is also indicated that we have another senior graduating this year that has been accepted to the United States Coast Guard Academy. This is a $350,000, $100,000 scholarship, and it is a brother sister team, so I think that's probably one of the first that we've met here. And I really appreciate you coming out, it was great, because it was one thing that a lot of board members wanted, was to change the festival Wednesday night, because most all selectmen's meetings and other towns didn't have Wednesday night, and they really wanted to have you as a selectman. So I thank you for coming, and it is, it is more open, and there's a lot more experience going on.
I think you should also mention that we had the math portion of the.
Highest in the nation.
Was the highest in the nation.
She wanted to go math for the highest, he, one of the highest in the nation, and also he is a, he makes that.
He's a junior.
And he's a junior, and he is on the academic decathlon team this year again, so we look forward to seeing him, so.
Who is this?
It is, um, let me ask, his last name, I can't remember, I can't remember his last name. He was here, he was here one day for a selectman's meeting.
Dervin, it's the same.
Or, what's he, he's a medical scout.
Manducah.
Manducah, no, he's a medical scout.
Joe, Joe Manducah?
No, no, not, no, not David Manducah. No, he was, he was his father one night at a selectman's meeting this past winter, and they were doing, he was doing a project that he had to do.
Daddy's badge?
Yeah. Was he a scout?
Was he a warrior?
He, he plays a number, he played, he took the gold medal, national in math.
Yeah, that's the Manducah boy. He did his, over at the boat launch, he built the chair.
Yeah, he did the boat. Bless you, Tom, and Megan, no, Chris Bryant?
Yes, Bryant.
Chris Bryant, Chris Bryant.
Yeah, I didn't think it was Manducah.
Yeah. Chris Bryant.
Excuse me.
And Jill Howard. I do really good.
Sorry.
Manducah is a good athlete.
He did come in with his dad, he was doing that.
But anyways, yes, that's what I'm saying. You know what's wrong?
You know, I'm not looking for any answers, I guess, just a few comments. When I open my tax bill, it's $120 higher than last year, and, you know, I retired in 2002, police department, and I've been working ever since, that was nine years ago, and I have retired income, and I have social security, but I can't, I don't, I have a hero on it. And you people say, hey, you do the municipal budget, and people can disagree with it if they want, I'm really not interested in that. You do the municipal budget, you do a good job, and it doesn't increase taxes, and you all die. No. Because then here comes the RSU, which takes it to us. But let me tell you that it's your job, whether you think it is or not, and you can deny it, and begin, doesn't matter, it's your job to oversee the overall budgetary matters in the town. Just because you managed to stick the municipal budget just slightly under what we had the previous year, and along comes the schools, and sticks it up there, and then we get it struck somewhere when we get it in the mail. I don't have wells to go to. I work now, at almost 71 years old, every day. Retired at 62. That's pretty bad, as far as I'm concerned. So I think you need to do a little more when you come to the budget coming up, you need to do a little more overseeing the whole budget. Okay? We go to the polls, and vote on the school budget, and Monmouth traditionally votes it down because they don't like it, and we get it passed anyway, and we get the penny anyway, and that's because we're in the RSU. And that's another issue. But the issue I have is, you need to oversee the whole budget, the whole budgetary matter. And like I said, you can say you don't need to do that, you can say you're not going to do that, but it's your job.
Mr. Chairman, let me just make a couple of comments. In October, I asked Curtis to have a budget goals workshop, I want to start with Monica and Cheryl, and we're going to advertise that, and I would encourage people from the community to participate and come in, but I think that it's very probable this year, very possible, that we should be able to keep the school budget and the town budget flat. I don't, from what I can gather, there's not going to be any decrease in aid to education next year, so if the schools can hold the line, which we're, I certainly am in favor of putting pressure on and reduce, we should be able to keep that in good state, as well as we're going to lose the 27th payroll, we're going to lose a couple of other problems that we have. So I, I think we should be in pretty good shape next year, and hopefully.
I encourage you. And what this gentleman says, I'll just keep it brief, but I don't think that budget is what he's saying. How's the ball cupped here, is a little bit, the problem I see is, nobody would set an aggressive goal up, everybody said we'll keep it the same. We'll never get to the same because it keeps going up, it's either going to be the state chair of the town, it's going to be the RSU, we've got to get more rest of it.
Well, I guess what I meant is no tax increase budget. I think, I think that's achievable next year.
Yeah.
It seems particularly unfair to suggest that the town should cut its budget 10, 15, 20 percent to make up for the huge RSU issue.
Well, I think, yeah.
If I did not say that, that's what it would amount to, to control that.
I'd like to say something. The residents of Monmouth actually brought to the budget meetings proposals for tax reduction of almost $100,000, but the board did not want to look at those, and it did not impact cutting services, it impacted cutting waste. But the board did not want to look at that, and if you review the minutes, you will see that I even asked the board, are we going to entertain any of the proposals that the residents have made? And it was completely disregarded, so. And to, say you're coming in with a flat budget and increase your revenue line to make it look like a flat budget to the taxpayer, is incorrect, and should not have been done, and we didn't even meet some of the revenue line goals that were set and asked this whole year. That's what I have to say on that, thank you.
Sure.
I'll just say something, to help the world, police are always like, and they voted no, they didn't do that much.
Mr. Chair, just, uh, correct me if I'm off, but under state statute, RSU selectmen have no right and have no say in the budget. So, selectmen in the town, the selectmen, we're taken away from that, they can't, they can't say yea or nay to school budget, and it's under state law under the RSU. I don't agree with that, I think the selectmen should be participating in that, but unfortunately, thank you.
They have every right to go there and speak just like anybody else, and they can speak in their capacity just like anybody else, they have every right to do it, and you can pass state laws to the town, come home, and it does not make any difference, what you're saying. The other thing, what Kurt said, it becomes right down to the end, and you need to cut the municipal budget a little bit to get the school budget back, because you can't do it any other way, then that's what you should be doing. Because we can't pay anymore, every year, everything goes up, let me finish, my insurance is wrong, every single one of them. I, do I have a choice, I can go without health insurance, I can go without home insurance, if you, my house goes down, I'm in tough shape, or so on and so forth, lots of things I can't control. One thing I can control, I can walk in here and tell you what I think you're doing wrong, and you kind of should accept what I say to you, without giving me excuses, that's what I didn't want when I started telling you about.
Simply after.
Simple, simple, simple.
Thank you.
My statement wasn't an excuse, it was to clarify.
Appreciate your listening.
Thank you, Curtis. Thank you. Any other public comment? Well, the next item on the agenda is the recall ordinance amendments. It's the last page of the page, it's a stupid headline. It's the same thing about the, that's the last section. Let me read it, before we read it, I will. The read shows the town vote on the end of the ordinance for the recall of elected municipal officials by deleting section 6B in its entirety, replacing it with the, and affirmative vote removal shall require, one, a simple majority of the votes cast, and two, that at least 10% of the registered voters in the town go on that voting on the vote for removal.
As I, I would just like if you would reaffirm or reiterate that, especially, I'm sorry that Ed's gone, but regarding Ed's comment, that the way the ordinance is currently written, if a petition would require a number of signatures, I believe it's over 100, in our case, over 190 right now, would it be submitted, would it be submitted, a valid petition was submitted for recall of any official, elected official, that under our current ordinance, a two-thirds majority of the people who vote is required to recall, but there is no, there is no number stated as what percentage or what size vote it has to be, so if you take it to the, to the most ridiculous theoretical vote that you could have, you could have three people vote in an election to recall, two vote one way, and it goes that way. So what this does is require that at least, in our case, we believe it's 3,300 registered voters in town, there are about approximately 3,300. This would require that a minimum of that many people must participate in the vote for the vote to be down. So I think it accomplishes two things, it addresses the concerns of needing a super majority, and it also addresses a concern that I had with a very small number of people being able to decide very poorly. So having said that, I'd like to move that we place this, this article on the law.
Mr. Chair, I didn't understand, I couldn't, Carol, do all 33, are you basically, I think you've been on 3,300 people registered voters?
That's, that would, a 10%.
Oh, so it's percentage, okay.
That's 10% of the registered voters, whatever that number would be, right now, around.
Have to go to polls.
It's right around 3,300, so at least 10%, whatever that number is, have to participate in order for the vote to be down.
That's what I didn't understand, okay.
Right. Mr. Chairman, this petition, and I'm talking numbers now, if this official, if they're going to have access to a public hearing, the same official is not going to recall.
We have to have a public hearing party.
It's not required, but I can imagine why the board wouldn't conduct a public hearing, because this, that's.
It's not required in the current ordinance, no.
But for the.
It's not required in the, in the, in the current ordinance for recall, it's not required of whether to have a public hearing on the vote, such mean.
Is it required, I'll see if I rephrase, rephrase the question, because now I have the same question. I thought of it in the case of a public election, that there had to be a public hearing for the article that was going for the voter prior to the election.
I was going to say, the, the current ordinance does not require a public hearing, but I believe that the statutes require for referent to vote, a public hearing, so it would be likely the board would have to have a public hearing, and so, the ordinance does not require.
I'm on a different point, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking, if Harold had recall, the, 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 he can defend himself in public care.
Well, there's always that, that funny comment, this, this, in my mind, is no different than being elected, you have the ability to defend yourself, if you will, or to bring your case to the voters through the same means that you have to bring your case for elections to the voters, by speaking with people, by print, by whatever means you have to get the information out there, you know, it's the same as campaigning, you're basically, you're campaigning, you're trying to get the word out there, so, it's, it's, again, this isn't, this isn't a judicial process, this isn't a process where someone's accused a crime and charged and, and going through a legal process, it's a political process, so the same political steps that you would take to gain the office are the same steps that you would take to keep the office in that case.
I just want to concern you this is that, if I was a neighbor of yours, and your dog was using my property, a disoriented home, and you know what? Who want to get Harold? He's not taking care of his dog, who want to do a petition, and the recall, and Harold?
I'd rather you shoot the ball.
You would have to.
But you're still, and the first part, like, the petition has to state the reasons, so if you state reasons that you look like Harold's dog dumping it on your property, that would probably not get two hundred signatures, even here, right?
That would be the actual reason that I just explained, so if there was something personal between Harold and, and Harold's dog, that makes use.
I wouldn't sign that petition, no, dog.
But last meeting, you said you didn't need a reason to recall.
You do have to state a, 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 it doesn't have to be one that you're satisfied with, but it has to be something stated.
You don't want to come to somebody here.
Well, but that, no one's going to, you're not going to get two hundred signatures for that one. No, but if Harold decided he wanted to defend himself publicly, that he has the opportunity in the ordinance, I think I want a public hearing, but this, this manly neighbor of mine and my dog, you know, that's their problem.
I think it would require them to have a public hearing. Before the vote, but, before the, before, before the warrant is put out for people voting, you have to have a hearing on the warrant, so that's the only article on the warrant, you have a hearing on that article.
Why do the nice protection of the person?
Yeah, again, this is, as far as I'm concerned, this is a political process matter, and in a sense, everything regarding the vote is, you know, open to public debate and public scrutiny, then, you know, it's like, it's a bit like, if you take a step further, you get into state or even national politics, when people are campaigning, there are all kinds of things that are said about people that are running for office, and, and, you know, I don't know how much of them are, you know, false, some of them are pretty nasty, and a reasonable person conceived that they're just an attempt to belittle a person, or, you know, for the other person, and so, again, I think it comes down to reasonable people. When it comes to signing a petition, again, I think a reasonable person, you bring a petition to me that says, I want to recall Doug because his dog's, you know, poor across the property line, and say, well, you dog, you need to work that out, your neighbors know, hot signing the petition, you know, so I don't have that same concern. My concern with, my concern with this is that currently, I think our ordinance is flawed because it doesn't require a minimum number of people to participate, a reasonable minimum number of people to participate. We've had elections in the past where, you know, 120 or 170 people that showed up.
Yeah, that's due with special elections, 100 each one.
Right, so, you know, what, what this does is make sure that an election like that, that that type of participation can't decide an issue like this, there has to be a significant amount of participation. And that amount of participation is, exceeds the number of signatures that are required And that amount of participation is, exceeds the number of signatures that are required to bring the matter to a vote. So, you know, a large, significant amount. So, in that, it becomes, say, well, the same number of people came, it becomes, you have, in the political process, if you have support, then your support will come out and vote for you, and you're good. You don't have support, nobody comes out, it'll be bad. You, you lose, whatever, that's the political process. So, I, I made the motion.
I'll second it, all those in favor.
I understand.
Next, then, on the agenda is the parks ordinance amendments.